All right, I'm going to call this meeting in order of the adjourned meeting of the City Council. All members are present, Councilmember Rue is present via, via virtual. And we're going to have a council workshop to update on affordable housing and homeless assistance grant applications, awards, and projects. So who among staff is going to start this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the presenter this evening will be our Economic Development Agency Director, Mikey Fuentes. He is online in Zoom. And Mr. Fuentes, I believe you are there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, it's your presentation to make, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Dupree, members of the City Council as well as staff. Tonight, we will be addressing the twin issues related to homelessness and affordable housing, as well as providing a status report on applications for grants, awards, and projects related to both homeless outreach and affordable housing. So the first part of the presentation will be related to homelessness and a plan to address and combat homelessness in the city of Montclair. So as we know, homelessness is an extraordinary, complex problem necessitating active sustained collaboration amongst a wide array of community partners, including counties, councils of government, cities, and other public and nonprofit agencies. No one city can address homelessness without a collaborative partnership. And until San Bernardino County, acting as a lead agency, develops a comprehensive, coordinated, multi-agency homeless initiative and develops long-term funding similar to Measure H in Los Angeles County to combat homelessness, Montclair and other cities in San Bernardino County are left to develop their own homeless plans with minimal fiscal assistance from regional partners. This presentation seeks to provide direction towards both a comprehensive, coordinated, multi-agency homeless initiative led by the city of Montclair. As such, this presentation, coupled with a discussion of affordable housing, serves to recognize not only Montclair's initiatives in these matters, but also to clarify that long-term nexus to addressing the twin crises of homelessness and affordable housing requires a multi-pronged collaborative approach involving partnerships between local, regional, state, and federal partners, along with participation from the private sector. And the following is a series of definitions that are used by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development related to categories of what they consider to be those individuals experiencing homelessness. The first category is Category 1, and it is literal homelessness. And that includes individuals and families who live in a place not meant for human habitation, including streets, cars, emergency shelters, transitional housing, and hotels paid for by government or charitable organizations. Category 2 are those individuals who are at immediate risk of homelessness. And that includes individuals and families who lose their primary nighttime residence within the next 14 days and have no other resources or support networks available to obtain permanent housing. Category 3 is homelessness under other statutes. And that includes unaccompanied youth under the age of 25 or families with children who do not meet any other of the two other mentioned categories, but are also, but are considered homeless under other federal statutes, and are, who are those who have not had a lease and have not moved two or more times in the past 60 days and are likely to remain unstable because of special needs or barriers that are not allowing them to gain access to permanent or transitional housing. And the fourth category is individuals who are fleeing domestic violence. And that's individuals or families who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or who lack, and who lack their resources and support networks to obtain permanent or transitional housing. HUD also, in their annual homelessness assessment report to Congress, which is done every single year, provides further definitions of what is homelessness. And per HUD's definition, homelessness is a condition of people who lack a fixed, regular, inadequate nighttime residence, and includes the following: people who are living in places not meant for human habitation, people who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, people who will lose their primary nighttime residence within the next two weeks, and people who are unaccompanied youth and homeless families. And so you can see from the definition of homelessness are the four categories that were just mentioned in the prior slide. And then there's also unsheltered, which can be individuals who do not have a primary nighttime residence where they sleep and who are sleeping in areas either in their cars, parks, abandoned buildings, bus or train station, airports, or camping grounds. So for HUD, they have these various categories of individuals who are experiencing homelessness under this much larger umbrella of homelessness, which is either individuals who are shelter, or who are homeless and have shelters, and those who are homeless and do not have shelters. And the following are some further definitions that are provided by HUD in their annual report to Congress. And that is, experiencing homelessness is a person who lacks a fixed, regular, inadequate nighttime residence. Families experiencing chronic homelessness are people and families with children in which the head of the household has a disability and has either been continuously experiencing homelessness for one year or more, or who has experienced at least four episodes of homelessness in the past three years, where the combined length of time experiencing homelessness on those occasions is at least 12 months. And so that is what they consider a family experiencing homelessness as chronic. And then we have the category of, excuse me, the definition of individuals experiencing chronic homelessness are individuals with a disability who have been continuously experiencing homelessness for one year or more, or who have experienced at least four episodes of homelessness in the last three years, where the combined length of time experiencing homelessness on those occasions is at least 12 months. And then there's also the definition of people and families with children who are homeless. And that is people who are experiencing homelessness as part of a household that has at least one adult aged 18 or older and one child under the age of 18. Then there is the accompanied youth under 18 experiencing homelessness. And these are individuals in households with only children who are not part of a family with a child or who are accompanied by their parent or guardian during their experience of homelessness and who are under the age of 18. So they may or may not be with their families while they're experiencing homelessness, or they might be with friends or other individuals who may not make up their family, but who are also experiencing homelessness with them. And then there's also the category of an accompanied youth. And those are from 18 to 24 who are experiencing homelessness. And those are young adults in households without children who are not part of a family with children or who are accompanied by their parents or guardians during the episode of experiencing homelessness. And again, they are between the ages of 18 and 24. And then, again, as I had mentioned, there are the two categories, the broad categories by HUD of sheltered homelessness, which are people who have a place to stay. And those are typically individuals who are staying in an emergency shelter, transitional housing program, other types of safe havens, or staying with either family or friends on a temporary basis. And then there's unsheltered homeless, which are people who don't have a, whose primary nighttime location is either a public or private place that's not designated or ordinarily used as a sleep-in accommodation. So this is for people who typically are either sleeping in their cars, parks, streets, or in other public spaces.
Well, I want to point out that it's important that the council remember those last two definitions because they're germane to the presentation as we go forward. You will hear unsheltered homelessness and sheltered homelessness, along with the general definition of homelessness. The idea behind presenting all of these different definitions is to demonstrate to you the complexity of the issue. There are obviously all of these different categories. And so while it's common refrain to say that a person is homelessness, is homeless, you have to look at other conditions surrounding that particular individual or family to determine whether or not they actually need help at any particular time or whether it's a chronic condition. But these two, sheltered and unsheltered, are very much important to the presentation.
Yes, and just to add to City Manager Starr's comment, under HUD, in the next discussions and all of their publications that they provide, they look at homelessness in the broad category and they define it whether it's sheltered or unsheltered. So in a lot of the next data sets that will be provided to the council will have homelessness and then discuss it either as being sheltered or unsheltered. And then the various categories, as had been mentioned, are basically what HUD defines as those individuals who are experiencing homelessness. So they are homeless, but for various different reasons under those categories. So what are the causes of homelessness? As we know, homelessness is a very complex issue, but there are several contributing factors that we can pinpoint that do, that explain some, some instances why individuals are experiencing homelessness. So what are those causes? One is a lack of affordable housing. As we know, across the nation, and particularly here in California and in Southern California, rents and home prices have skyrocketed, creating a very, very unaffordable housing market that we've experienced in any particular time. I can attest to that because I'm currently looking at purchasing a home and the prices are extremely astronomical. So that's, that's one of the causes. And then, related to lack of affordable housing, because there is not enough of a supply for the demand, obviously, the prices in homes have increased significantly. In March of 2024, so, you know, last month or two months ago, home prices in Southern California hit a record high of roughly $869,000. And coupled with the increase in higher mortgage rates as the Fed tries to control inflation, rates right now are anywhere between the upper 6% to 7% interest. And so right now, the average mortgage that an individual is paying is roughly $5,500. And locally in Montclair, the average price for a home in Montclair can value between $650,000 to $700,000. And these are homes that need significant rehab. So the price, while being high, you also have to add the fact that these homes have to have considerable amounts of rehabilitation, not just for cosmetic reasons, but just wear and tear. And, you know, the fact is that most people who do sell their homes don't necessarily keep up the rehab necessary to maintain the, the homes in a, in a good condition. In addition to that, home construction, as I had mentioned, there is not enough homes being built, which is driving up the price for both purchases of homes as well as for the rental market. And we can see recently that most of the housing product that has been built over the past couple of years has been related to apartment complexes because there's been such a high demand for those types of residential, residential units. In addition, education, a lack of higher education prevents individuals from gaining higher-paying jobs that they need in order to afford the increased rent and mortgage prices. And in addition to that, just generational competition, that with the millennials now coming of age, there is a large population of millennials who are trying to purchase their, their first homes, which is causing increased scarcity in the actual supply of homes. So you're compounding, you know, not enough supply with this huge amount of, you know, people who are trying to purchase homes. It's putting a lot of pressures on the market, and this is something that we haven't seen in quite a long time. And what are the other major factors contributing to homelessness apart from the affordability crisis related to homes? Our poverty, low wages, and a lack of impactful social safety nets have also led many individuals vulnerable to homelessness. And you can see in recent legislation with the increase in the minimum wage for fast food workers, one of the reasons why that was touted and approved and moved forward by the legislature is that they found that the majority of individuals who actually work in the fast food industry are not those who we typically think of as being, you know, teenagers or, you know, students in college, but they're actually the primary breadwinners of their families. So that was, you know, one of the reasons why in the legislature's eyes that they had thought that, you know, increasing the minimum wage for fast food workers would help to address and alleviate some of these issues related to, to poverty. You also have mental illness. Persons with mental health issues can find it difficult in order to find the necessary help in, in addressing their, their issues. And, and that not only pertains to their own mental health, but them being able to gain, you know, employment, which also affects their ability to, you know, have secured housing for them. You also have the issue, not in addition to mental illness that, you know, can lead to homelessness, but also substance abuse issues. Addiction, as we know, has various, you know, negative outcomes and that, you know, puts relation, that puts individuals in strained positions related to the relationships, you know, difficulty in finding places of employment or even being able to function in an actual place of employment. And of course, without having a job, an individual won't be able to pay, you know, rent or their mortgage, which also leads to homelessness. And then you also have individuals who are experiencing homelessness because they are fleeing domestic violence. You know, they may be in a relationship where they are not the primary breadwinner in their family, and in order to leave, you know, their domestic abuser, they have to leave with whatever they have. And oftentimes, you know, they're not able to take anything, any resources they have, and they just have to leave because they've gotten to a point where they can no longer be in that situation of being, you know, abused by their, their abuser. So those are, you know, some of the reasons why, you know, factors that can contribute to homelessness. And as a whole, as we know, homelessness is a very complex issue, as I had mentioned before, affecting not only cities, but also counties, the state, and the nation as a whole. And according to the most recent data from the 2023 Point in Time Count, over 653,000 individuals experience homelessness on any given night in the United States. In California, that number is 181,399. In the city of Montclair, that number is 71. And again, this is from the most recent data that we have from the 2023 Point in Time Counts. The 2024 Point in Time Counts, that data has not been published. So all of the information being presented is from the 2023 Point in Time Count. And you can also note that between 2022 and 2023, the number of people experiencing homelessness throughout the country increased by 12%, or roughly 70,650, up from what was in 2022 number, 582,450, which is now 653,100. And we can safely say that when the 2024 Point in Time Counts come out, that the number will have increased from the current number. And right here, there is a map that shows the number of individuals experiencing homelessness throughout the country, and it's broken down by state. You can see that the states that are in the deeper blue have a higher number of people experiencing homelessness by the population of 10,000, whereas the lighter in blue you go, it's the lower number of states that have homelessness. So as you can see, homelessness has been effective severely in the western states, as you can see. And then, while homelessness, like I mentioned in the map four that you had just seen, is less apparent, if we just go back to the map real quick, you can see again, the lighter shades, as you can see, in the majority of the states, there is not that great amount of individuals experiencing homelessness. But as you go more towards the west, you can see the shades of blue increase, meaning that there has been an increase in the homeless population. There's a larger number, I should say. So why is homelessness less apparent in the rest of the states versus in the west states? So the reason for this is due in large part to two Ninth Circuit court cases. And those court cases are Martin versus Boise back in 2018, and Johnson versus Grants Pass, which is in 2022. And in Martin versus Boise, the court found that cities cannot enforce anti-camping ordinances. And if they do have those ordinances in place, they have to be able to provide enough shelter beds for those individuals experiencing homelessness, or else those anti-camping ordinances are deemed illegal. And then in Johnson versus Grants Pass, the court reaffirmed the Martin versus Boise case and found that by punishing people for sleeping in public places without an alternative, without being able to provide them either temporary housing, permanent housing, that, that is tantamount to cruel and unusual punishment. So these two court cases have been the real big basis as to why most of the states in the west coast have taken a more lenient approach towards, and tolerance towards encampments that, you know, we typically see when we think of homeless, unsheltered individuals is, is what we typically see.
So when you, so when you hear a Florida governor speak about how there is not a homeless issue in the state of Florida, but if you look at California, you see this significant problem, these two court cases are the reason why, because these affect only the western states of the United States. They don't cover the eastern, east coast. And so Florida has greater leniency in dealing with homelessness within their state. It's not because California or any of the western states aren't trying to gain a handle on the problem or otherwise address it in a way that is impactful, not only in relation to relieving the problem on our streets, but also addressing the issue directly with homeless people by trying to provide them some sort of shelter. There are many permutations to this issue, and these two court cases are a significant part of that. It isn't a matter of the western states just being more tolerant and welcoming and not caring, but they are very much restricted by these court cases.
Yes. And then just to add to what City Manager Starr was stating, the western states are having to adhere to these court cases. But more recently, to those two court cases, the Supreme Court has elected to take all arguments, both on Martin versus Boise and Johnson versus Grants Pass. And the court just recently, excuse me, started hearing arguments on April 24th. And it's anticipated that the Supreme Court will have their decision sometime either next, sometime next month. And it's widely anticipated that the Supreme Court, to some degree, will reverse at least some parts of the Ninth Circuit's decision in both Grants Pass and Boise. We're not sure at the moment, and no one really is sure, what those reversals might be if they do happen. I think just from looking at the makeup of the court and their being a little bit more conservative in their interpretations, that the anticipation is that they will either strike some parts, maybe all of it. We're not actually sure. But we're going to be staying tuned to that. And based on what the Supreme Court does in June, what their decision is, it can either require all of the states to really reevaluate, in the west coast, to really reevaluate their approach towards addressing homelessness as well as a tolerance. And while the states have, the western states have been a little bit more tolerant because of these court decisions, there has been some efforts at the local level. There has been a backlash as to what the states are, you know, doing. For instance, this upcoming November in Arizona, voters will decide on a ballot initiative that would award property owners tax refunds if they can prove that there has been monetary damage to either their business or property from the local government's failure to enforce nuisance laws against homeless individuals. So for instance, if there is a, if I'm a, if I'm a property owner in Arizona and I own a business and there is a homeless encampment, you know, across from my property, I could petition and say, hey, the city is not addressing homelessness. It's blight on my property. I should get a reduction in my property taxes because it's negatively affecting my property and my business. And this is, so far, has been one of the first ballot initiatives of this type. And it could be that this initiative becomes a model for others, other states to pass because there has been such a backlash from the public as to their perception that local elected officials, both at the state, county, and state levels are not addressing homelessness, at least in their eyes. So there is this, you know, backlash that has been occurring, not because the states and cities and counties haven't been trying to do their effort, but because of a perceived notion that they're not doing enough. And so right here, I want to show this, this image.
Mikey, can we just, because we have a lot of pages go through here in time. Can we just skip to page slide 25, get to homelessness in California?
Yeah, of course. We can do that. So skipping ahead, homelessness in California, as we'd seen in the map, California consistently ranks among the state with the highest number of homelessness. California is home to 12% of the nation's population, 28% of the nation's homeless population, and 50% of the nation's unsheltered homeless population. And of that, like I had mentioned, you could see here, 68% of individuals experiencing homelessness in California experience it outdoors. And that is because we have a very nice climate that allows for people to be unsheltered, whereas in other states, based off of their weather, they not necessarily have the ability to be homeless outdoors, especially with, with storms and such on the east coast and, and of course, winter. And then on the next slide, you can see here, this is the 2023 Point in Time Count for California. You can see the state has a total homeless population of 181,399. Of that, you can see that there has been, since the Point in Time Count started, there has been an increase in 30, 30.5% from 2007. And from the 2022 Point in Time Count, it was a 5.8% increase. And on the right-hand side, you can see the, the numbers of individuals experiencing homelessness. People, there's roughly 25,000 people and families with children experiencing homelessness, 10,000 unaccompanied homeless youth, 10,000 veterans roughly, and 71,000 individuals who are chronically homeless. And so you can see here that since 2018, there has been an increase of, sorry, this is the homeless numbers in San Bernardino County. And you can see from 2018 to 2023, the number of homeless individuals has increased significantly in the county. It's gone up roughly 2,000, by 2,000 individuals, which is roughly a 98.1% increase. And in comparison, you can see right here, there is the 2022 homeless count, which put the total at 3,333 individuals. And the 2023 homeless count put it at 4,195 individuals experiencing homelessness in the county. And then right here is the breakdown of the jurisdictions with the largest numbers of homeless individuals in San Bernardino County. And you can see those cities are much larger cities, Ontario, San Bernardino, Victorville, Barstow, Colton, Fontana, Ontario, and Redlands. So this is the cities that have the bulk of the individuals experiencing homelessness in the county. And so what is the city of Montclair doing to address homelessness? And why is Montclair working to address homelessness? As you could see in the prior slide, we saw that homelessness is on the rise in San Bernardino County. And the county between 2022 and 2023 saw an increase of roughly 25% in the individuals experiencing homelessness. Again, the Point in Time Count for Montclair in 2023 was 71 individuals who were experiencing homelessness. As we know, Montclair is committed to working with the local community, neighboring cities, San Bernardino County, other public agencies, and regional partners to develop strategy, strategies that will address homelessness in an equitable manner across the west end of San Bernardino County. Montclair aims to achieve the following overarching goals to address homelessness, and that is to reduce the impact of homelessness within the city, provide resource guides to homeless individuals, assist with housing placement, food security, and intervention services, align city resources with county investments, and improve the quality of life for all of our residents. In 2016, the city of Montclair formed a special enforcement homeless outreach team within the code enforcement division to address homelessness. The outreach team consists of two full-time code enforcement staff members as well as support from code enforcement, community development, economic development, Community development, economic development, public works, police and fire departments, and the. Special enforcement outreach team's objective is to implement the city's goals related to addressing homelessness. Which include obtaining temporary housing placement and providing referrals. Obtaining or directing homeless persons to available intervention services related to substance abuse. Um mental health and physical health, tracking the city's homeless population in terms of the number of homeless individuals. Working with local and regional partners and providing necessary enforcement and targeted activities related to illegal activities. Um right here, there is a list of um various of the um partners that the outreach team works with. Um related to homeless, um working with our homeless population, this is uh. Just a small sample of the number of nonprofits. Um and other agencies that the city works with in addressing homeless and homeless outreach. Um amongst Montclair's community partners, relationships with Set Free Ministry and the Christian Development. Center are integral to the city's homeless outreach program. Set Free Ministries provides a range of services including temporary housing, job placement. Food assistance, emergency intervention, counseling services, substance abuse intervention, health evaluation. Infield assessment and evaluation and other essential services. And the Christian Development Center is also an integral part of the city's implementation of grants through the. San Bernardino County's Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. And the Christian Development Center has partnered with the city on this program for the past three cycles. It's anticipated that in the future, Christian Development Center will be the one submitting um. For this grant, because a grant does require cross um jurisdiction assistance. So we can't just provide assistance under the HAP funding. For just individuals in the city of Montclair, but we had to provide it to all individuals within the west end um. West End region, which is why we anticipate Christian Development Center to be taking on this role going forward. And in addition, Montclair has partnered with Christian Development Center to develop food insecurity programs. Um according to the US Department of Agriculture, food insecurity is when individuals do not have adequate. Um individuals do not have adequate access to food, and they're limited to um. Access to food either by um lack of money or other resources. And then food and nutrition assistant programs aim to increase food security by providing. Individuals who don't have access at um to healthy um diets and healthy programs by um other uh resources. Food assistance resources, in San Bernardino County, the food insecurity rate is nine point six. And it's slightly behind the ten point five percent rate of California. And then according to Feeding America, it would take nearly two point seven billion dollars to meet California's food insecurity needs. And recently, the city provided Christian Development Center with a five thousand dollar community benefit fund award. To help combat food insecurity in the city of Montclair. And Montclair annually provides a Christian Development Center with application support um to develop other grants for food insecurity. Um Montclair has become a, because of the the programs that Montclair has developed related to our homeless outreach. We have been providing. A lot of resources that other surrounding agencies are not providing. And according to our homeless outreach team, at least seventy percent of the individuals that they are making contact with. Are who are experiencing homelessness when they when they when they interact with them on the streets. They aren't Montclair residents, they are residents that are coming to Montclair from other surrounding communities. Because those communities are not providing them with. The same level and service of programs that we provide and resources that we're providing to um. Individuals experiencing homelessness in the city of Montclair, so. We're providing, you know, seventy percent of individuals who are experiencing homelessness are coming from outside of the city. And we're really only servicing thirty percent of our own residents who are experiencing homelessness in our efforts um. In our homeless outreach, and cross jurisdiction assistance and support is unsupported by contractual agreements between Montclair. And joining municipal agencies, and it has been placing a significant administrative burden. On not only the um homeless outreach team, but also on staff and the other departments who provide ancillary support. To the homeless outreach team. And that is another reason why we're anticipating that going forward, that the city that. The Christian Development Center and not the city of Montclair will be um going after the HAP grants from the. From the county, because we cannot put um. Um regulations as to who who we can provide the services to. Um in addition, the city of Montclair has retained the services of Kenneth Gominski, he is the city's current homeless outreach consultant. And Mr. Gominski was brought in to help the homeless outreach team further develop. Um the state of Montclair's outreach program, Mr. Gominski. Is a retired deputy police chief from the city of Santa Ana, and he was appointed to the city of Santa Ana's Services Division. Back in twenty twenty one, um Mr. Gominski has been providing municipalities with consulting services to help develop. And guide them in their respective um homeless outreach programs. Mr. Gominski was instrumental in establishing Santa Ana's Navigation Center, which is a concept that the city of San Bernardino. Uh which is a concept that county of San Bernardino is currently looking at, and we have referred um Mr. Gominski. To staff at the um fourth district supervisor Kirk Hagman's office. In order to help the county in their efforts to develop further plans on how they want to address homelessness. Um and in addition to that, the city of Montclair has also implemented or is evaluating other innovative programs. Um for homeless outreach, including enhancing the capabilities of the city's code enforcement, special enforcement team. By equipping the eh equipping them with um on field tools that they can use to monitor and report homeless. Homelessness in the city, as well as look for available resources in real time to those individuals that they are trying to provide resources to. Um but we're also looking to improve citizen outreach for reporting homeless related issues. By allowing individuals in the city to either report homeless or homeless individuals or encampments of homeless individuals by using this. The city of Montclair's My Montclair app, or by calling the city of Montclair's homeless hotline. At nine zero nine six two five nine four three one, or by reporting it via email to homelessness at cityofmontclair.org. As well as the homeless outreach team has been working with the business community. In um promoting the city's no trespassing program. And this would, this requires property owners to sign a limited authorization for arrest form, which allows. Homeless or the homeless outreach team to. Interact with individuals who are on private property, and if they don't want to leave or get the resources that the team is providing them. Then they can be um filed with trespassing. And the city provides, as part of this program, the city covers the costs related to providing these signages. To be put on um private property, noticing the trespassing. Um the city has also been looking at entering to agreements with Caltrans, Union Pacific Railroad, the Army Corps of Engineers. MetroLink, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, as well as the San Bernardino County Flood Control District to address homeless. Issues on all of these um agencies' respective properties. Which relate to homeless encampments, graffiti, damage, trash debris. Um pandering, so we're trying to work with these various agencies to allow the city of Montclair's outreach team. To um provide resources to those individuals experiencing homelessness, these this. We required to have these agreements in place as, you know, these properties are not within our. Technical jurisdiction, and so we would need to have these agreements in place in in order for us to. Provide services to those individuals experiencing homelessness on those particular properties owned and controlled by other um. Public entities. And then as you can see here, here is the point in time count for the city of Montclair from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty three. As you can see, the number has increased dramatically, and of course, in twenty twenty one, there was not a. Point in time count conducted as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And then right here, this is the latest report from the twenty twenty three point in time count. Um for the city of Montclair, and here is a list of all of the demographic information related to those individuals. The seventy one individuals who were contacted and surveyed as part of the twenty twenty three point in time count, as you can see. It has all the information related to age, um ethnicity, gender. If these individual were veterans, as you can see here, we only have three individuals who are veterans. Um that are part of these population of seventy one, um their. Income, if they have physical or mental disabilities, their race, if they're experiencing violence, if they're um. Leaving um in leaving situations where they're experiencing violence, if they're in foster care, so this is kind of just. An overview of the demographic information of of our homeless population of from the twenty twenty three point in time count. So the city of Montclair has been in partnership with San Bernardino County, as we had mentioned at the beginning of this presentation. Really takes the county's effort to be the leader in this. Um no one city can address homelessness within their within their boundaries, because it's just a spillover effect, you know, if one city addresses it. You know, it either brings more individuals experiencing homelessness into that in that jurisdiction, or if a jurisdiction is pushing up the homelessness. Homeless individuals into another jurisdiction, it's just a constant spillover effect, so we have been in communication with the county to. Develop funding sources and plans to develop a regional navigation center, as I mentioned before. We have provided the county with um information services provided by Mr. Ken Gominski. And he has been reaching out to San Bernardino County and starting to work with them on the concept of navigation center. And the concept of a navigation center is basically a one stop shop for individuals experiencing homelessness. To have um be provided uh with resources, and that would include mental. Men- medical care, mental health care, substance abuse counseling, um case management, job training, job placement, job referrals. Meals, it can provide temporary housing referrals, so this is basically. One stop building where an individual experiencing homelessness can go to have all of their needs met. To help them overcome what is leading to their homeless, to them experiencing homelessness. Um and so what is the cost behind a navigation center, so the estimated cost to open a two hundred. Bedroom to three hundred bedroom navigation center would be roughly. Alright, would be thirty million to fifty million dollars, um and that is not including the annual maintenance or operation of that. The city of Santa Ana right now spent roughly twenty four million dollars to open their navigation center, it's about two hundred beds. And that is only half of the facility has been can completed, and they're using roughly. Um in operation costs annually, it's about thirty, three point five million dollars to provide those wraparound services. Um and so the county is going to be receiving part of the millionaire's tax to help. Um provide dedicated homeless programs and funding that could be used to develop a countywide navigation center. So um as I'd mentioned, the county is looking at developing a navigation center as part of that. What the county is really looking at is they would provide this navigation center. Um cities would be able, if they want to be a part of that, they'd be able to refer those individuals experiencing homelessness within their own cities. To the navigation center, and as part of that, the county would be looking at the cities to provide interim housing. For those individuals who are being serviced by the navigation center. Um and like I said, the navigation centers conduct client intake assessments when an individual is referred there. And they look at all of the issues that individuals experiencing, um they do a complete health screen, mental health, physical health. Um they they basically do a complete rundown of of the person and provide them all the necessary services they need. In order to address um what is affecting and causing them to be homeless. Yes, and in addition to the navigation center, um the county is also looking at um implementing what we know as the CARES Act. Which is the Community Assessment Recovery Empowerment, which would. Have those individuals who are not capable or who are unwilling to be um treated for their homelessness, this is typically for individuals having. Um mental health issues that they would be put into a program. By the court for a year where they would basically be in um court or they'd be ordered to be. In a treatment program and to be provided housing, um so that's another avenue that the county is looking at doing. And then for those municipalities who would be looking at partnering with the navigation center with the county. Like I'd mentioned, the county is looking at having those cities be the ones providing um interim housing. So right now, the city of Montclair is look is in conjunction with working with the county on the nega- navigation center concept. We're looking at acquiring possibly a motel in order to convert that motel to provide interim housing. Um right now, we're working on the county on that, we're looking at two potential sites within the city, um two motels. And the county is willing to to give the city up to five million dollars for. Um in grant funds for the acquisition and rehabilitation of a property to become an intra- a motel to become interim housing. As well as to provide um seed money to cover the costs related to um. Case management services, possibly up to three years, so we're currently looking at that, and the Montclair Economic Development Agency. Is currently taking the lead on that um acquisition of a motel. And then the city of Montclair, in addition to working with the county, is looking to establish a rapid housing development program. To provide financials, financial support to secure housing options for a longer term, so this would be for more. Um once a person is finished with interim housing, this would be for providing more permanent housing, so we're looking at providing. Um working with the county on getting resources, and it could be, you know, vouchers for covering the cost of um a rental unit. Um is kind of what we're looking at right now, so it would be more for permanent housing. And as I mentioned before, um county's efforts will be greatly um impacted by the new proposition one, which is the millionaire's tax. Uh sorry, not the millionaire's tax, but proposition one, which was um the six point four billion dollar bond to support treatment centers and. Permanent supportive housing, um this um changes a two thousand and four voter approved tax on incomes over a million dollars. And that would generate roughly four billion dollars in annual funding. To provide counties with additional funding to address mental health issues, um as well as homelessness. And that uh proposition one also includes a six point four billion dollar bond. To build eleven thousand addiction and mental health treatment beds across the state, as well as to provide. Supportive housing for veterans and county officials have until twenty twenty six to adjust their mental health budgets to reflect. The increased um funding that will be provided to them by proposition one. And then the counties are required as part of proposition one to invest thirty percent of monies they receive from the state's millionaire tax into housing programs. Including rental subsidies and navigation centers. Um commits four point four billion of bond monies towards inpatient and residential treatment beds. And also provides a two billion in bond monies, an earmark for permanent supportive housing, half of which would be set aside for veterans. And then the state is also looking at um streamlining statewide programs to expand. Uh access to mental health through uh Medi-Cal, um which is the public insurance program for low income Californians. Um which would help deal with behavioral health issues. Strengthening mental health and substance use disorders services, and better integrating them with physical health care. That would also include dental support, um enhanced care management, um and. Port for local communities to provide services within their own jurisdiction, so basically it's just expanding the um. Resources provided by Medi-Cal. And then the following is a couple of slides related to grants that the city has received related to homeless outreach, what the grants have been allocated to. As well as current grants that are pending, as you can see here, the city over the past um several years since. Twenty nineteen has received roughly seven hundred and eighty eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. That has been for various different um grants, um some of them are for heat. Project Room Key as well as the HAP, which is the grant we had referenced before from San Bernardino County. So these are the um total funds of the grants that we've received for homeless outreach. And the funds have been allocated to street outreach, navigation services and case management. Rental assistance and housing vouchers, and you can see here on this slide, it shows how those um. Amount of funds have been distributed for those three categories. And then the city has also applied for several other grants totaling roughly eight million eight hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. And that relates to the grant for the development of a homeless shelter, conversion of a homeless shelter. Or conversion of a motel to a homeless shelter, and we've also requested funding through the community project funding with. Uh Congresswoman Norma Torres for additional funding, two million dollars for rehabilitation, if we are successful in acquiring um a motel. And then we also applied for the California Interagency Council on Homeless Encampment, which is a Caltrans grant for 1.7 million dollars. And then the fourth round of the HAP, which is a homeless housing assistance and prevention program of 120,000. And so now, City Manager Star, would you like to pause to see if there's any questions related to homeless? Or would you like me to continue on to the affordable housing?
Well, that would be up to the mayor. How do you want to handle this, Mr. Mayor?
We're gonna pause, we're gonna focus first on homeless. I know it's almost six o'clock. So let's focus on homeless first and see how far this discussion goes. And if we don't, we ran out of time for the second portion on the affordable housing, perhaps we can reschedule that to another day. So I'm gonna try this, let's, let's maybe try it with questions first and we'll leave our comments in the second half of, of this, but I'll start with Mayor Paul Timon, Denise Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Economic Director Fuentes, for all of your hard work. This is very thorough. I do have two questions. One is a question that started on page 30. What is in the resource guide that is, would be given to homeless people? What's in it?
Well, I believe we already have a resource guide that code enforcement distributes. It provides them information related to services they can receive, contact information, and whether or not by handing out the resource guide, any encouragement related to help. It may not be a comprehensive guide, it may be just sheets of paper that they hand out right now. But we are in the process of putting something together that's more permanent and more comprehensive, so that it is like a booklet that we can hand out. Mr. Fondario may have some additional information that he may want to discuss in relation to that. But basically, that's what it is right now, just some documentation that we hand out related to resources that are available, so that in case they want some help later on, they know how to contact us, or they know how to contact these different service providers. But again, down the road, it will be a more comprehensive document.
Got it. But my second question is from page 43, when we were talking about the navigation centers. So if it's a, if there's one regional navigation center, how do people get to it? So like if they're, if it's somebody in Montclair and the navigation center is in the city of San Bernardino, how, how are, are we gonna provide transportation for them, or how are they gonna get to and fro?
Okay, so this will be a West End navigation center. It's very likely that it will be located on unincorporated area in Fontana. And our code enforcement bureau already transports people to different locations for temporary housing assistance or whatever kind of assistance that they need. In addition, they take them up to the trans center for bus transport or train transport, whatever it is that they need. So we would be relying on code enforcement to do the transport to either the navigation center or to a bus service, or perhaps even some of the ride-sharing services that are available to get them to that location. But it's more likely that code enforcement personnel would directly transport.
Thank you, Mr. Star. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my questions.
Okay. Nobody else has got questions. Councilor Rue, you have any questions? Are you there, Bill? Any questions, Bill?
Hello?
No?
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. One, and I, you said to keep the comments for later, and I will, I do have comments. With this resource guide, if I'm homeless, I may not have a phone, I don't have access to a computer, I certainly don't have access to maybe transportation, so I have this resource guide, what do I do with it?
Well, I think that many homeless people do in fact have phones. That seems to not be a deficiency in relation to the homeless population. When code enforcement meets with them, they can directly give a response to the code enforcement personnel at that time. In addition, code enforcement repeatedly goes back out into the community to make contact with these individuals. They also can access computers at the library, if that is something that they want to do. But we have found that for the most part, many of these individuals, if not most of them, do have cell phones.
I, I doubt a homeless person would want to go into the library. They, if they do walk in, they're probably given a bad look and made to feel that they don't belong there. So they're not gonna go to the library and access a computer.
Well, many of them actually do.
We can debate that sometime, but anyway. You know, if you're on the street and you don't have the abilities to do this. So the resource guide is nice if somebody has the ability to access it. As far as a large resource center on the west end or a navigation center, that may sound nice, but quite often with the homeless, as I found in doing some research, they like to stay in the community they're in. That's just the way they are. We all feel that way. Nobody would like it if we were rooted from our home and sent somewhere else. So if, let's say this navigation center is not something they'd like to do, what can we do for them right here to house and shelter them?
Well, the idea of acquiring a motel to turn it into a temporary transit, temporary housing would provide some level of housing assistance to those individuals. Obviously, it depends on the particular case. If it is a person who has chronic homelessness, the experience there is that they don't want assistance from the city, they don't want assistance from the state or the county, and there's really little that we can do with them. So the shelter that we're providing in the city of Montclair, as Mr. Fuentes indicated, is primarily transition housing. That would be related to individuals going to the navigation center to get the comprehensive level of services that they need. Then they would come back to Montclair into the temporary housing facility that we would be providing. And then we would work with them here to find them permanent housing, job placement, making certain that they are getting the benefits that they're eligible for, such as social security-related benefits or Medi-Cal-related benefits. That is the type of facility that we would be operating. The chronic homeless, our experience is that they don't even want any help at all. We don't know how to help them unless they want assistance from the city, it's very difficult.
There's always going to be a section of chronic homeless. I know several cities more in LA County, which seems to be more acceptable, wanting to do something on this. They've actually set up tiny home villages that work very, very well. These individuals are taken care of on-site. There's services for them, they actually go out and work in many cases, receive job training. And they find they have connections to those communities. And I, I kind of like that model because it's smaller, you can scatter the sites around. That's just my preference on something like that. I find it difficult to think that someone who's homeless is going to go into a 200-bed navigation center. That's exactly what is the problem in many cases, because you're congregating everybody together. But that's just my opinion. The, the other question I have on this is, when we look at this, do we realize maybe 71 is the number at that moment in time? But it can grow or decrease, depending on where the homeless are going. They tend to move from place to place, looking for shelter and what they need to do. So I, I hope we're be, we're prepared to know that it's not just 71, it could be 171, it could be one on any given day. And, you know, I, I, I tend to, my view is I'd rather we have something here in our city that we can control, that we can operate, and that we can have the ability to do something with. 200 people in one homeless navigation center is an awful lot.
All right, thank you.
You know, it's.
I, I think you may.
All right, never mind, never mind, that's okay.
All right.
I can always make comments another way, thank you.
Councilor Martinez.
I'm, I'm curious too about the navigation center. You know, it sounds like a way for the county to get the surrounding cities involved in the efforts to address the homelessness issues, which is what we've been asking for. And if chronic homelessness is the real issue, we have 27.5% of Montclair's homeless that have only been homeless for the last 12 months, then it seems like addressing that issue quickly will prevent chronic homelessness in the future. So I, what I'm curious about though, as far as the navigation center is, are, are we going to have representatives from the participating cities on some sort of, if you know, some sort of board or commission or committee or some way to actively participate and discuss in how the navigation center is being run or handled, or just to give feedback of some sort?
Well, that all remains to be seen yet. City staff did visit a navigate, the navigation center in Santa Ana last week along with Mr. Gominski, who is actually the individual who is responsible for the development of that navigation center. We did have that sort of discussion with him as to what degree both the individuals who are being housed at the navigation center have a part in governance of the navigation center, as well as the agencies that are involved. But in that particular instance, this navigation center was operated solely by the city of Santa Ana with funding from the state of California. There was no participation by the county of Orange or surrounding communities, except for the fact that because Santa Ana is the only city in Orange County that has a navigation center, the surrounding cities either A, referred homeless individuals from their communities to that navigation center, or B, homeless individuals just happen to be at the door of the navigation center, dropped off by surrounding cities for the city of Santa Ana to take over their problems. So that is how it is working in Orange County. The difference here would be that under proposition one, counties are required in fact to open up navigation centers, which is why San Bernardino County is moving in this direction. San Bernardino County's intent is to enter into cooperative agreements with agencies in the west end of San Bernardino County that want to be a part of that navigation center. So for example, Montclair would enter into an agreement where we would acquire a certain number of beds at that navigation center that we would always be guaranteed. So let's say it's a 300 navigation center, Montclair says we want 50 of those beds. Those beds would always be secured, whatever the cost element is related to our participation or the degree of our participation. Again, those factors would remain to be seen. I would presume that while it probably will not be a JPA structure, it would have some sort of a governance that has participation by the agencies that are agreeing to be a part of it, simply because of the fact that these agencies are in, into agreement with San Bernardino County to have a role in that navigation center. And as Mr. Fuentes has pointed out, Montclair effectively has operated as a lead in many of the different homeless-related programs in San Bernardino County. We are the ones that are working with Supervisor Hagman's office to move forward with this navigation center. We are the ones that are making the referral of Mr. Gominski, who already has the experience in setting one up. And part of our role, I see, in going forward is to make certain that there is some sort of level of participation by surrounding agencies.
Wonderful, and that's why I asked.
If I can interact, maybe, I apologize, but I've been part of this too, a discussion. But the navigation, the county San Bernardino has been behind the wall on this issue. And it wasn't until probably last year, the county San Bernardino began to get more strategized on working this issue. I know both Supervisor Hagman and Supervisor Bak are an ad hoc committee. They brought some new staff aboard to begin to really focus on this. So this navigation center is something that Supervisor Hagman has, has been working on with county staff. It's still in flux, it's still being, you know, they're still working on the idea, the concepts, how this is gonna work. What I want to say of this is that I think Montclair, we're committed to also to have a facility and it works in conjunction with the navigation center. Doesn't mean everybody will go to the navigation center. You know, there are, there are, you know, navigation center is supposed to be a major wraparound service, especially, it's supposed to stabilize people, that's what, really what the navigation center, especially if residents who have their mento or they have substance issues. Other folks who don't have those issues, but they just have economic issues or living in a car and they just, you know, they just ran out of money. That person or, or husband, wife, or family would be more appropriate for what we're trying to do at a motel, then just take them to a navigation center. Again, this is, a lot of this is being flushed out. I'm hoping in the next, in the next, at the, by the end of the year, a lot of this information, how this navigation center, the development of it, I believe this will start from ground up. I don't think they have an existing center right now, or this existing building, being ground up to build it. But again, just, it's, it's still in flux. Still, the idea is still being developed, and I'll go back to you.
Right, well, I asked because, you know, Montclair has been such a leader when it, when it has come to this issue, and not to toot our own horn or anything, thank you for the, the amazing participants that have made it so. But I, I want to just be sure that Montclair is able to give some sort of input and feedback because I think we've done a great job as a city to address the issue.
Which, which we will, which one of the things I'm working to, I work with my colleagues in other cities to get us a little more coordinated on having discussion and discuss this navigation center as well. So that's something I've been doing. And I think also, if you recall, the San Bernardino Council of Governments, we're gonna pay more money into it, into the COG. And one of the activities the COG probably will take on is developing a strategy plan when it comes to homelessness. The question is that countywide, or can we just focus on the west valley? So, but the thing is that we as cities, in this case, I say Fontana West, need to really work much better together to understand our issues, each city, what the resources that we need, and how we can support getting money, federal money, state money as a group to really, not, not just put money towards capital, but also address the operations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lopez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's quite a bit of information to absorb and take in and then try to address all the questions or points in my head. I apologize in advance if I'm kind of scatterbrained and not cohesive in my questioning. And if I skip around, just bear with me. Since we're on the topic of the navigation center, it reminded me, and I did have a conversation with Senator Rubio's staff regarding the San Gabriel Valley Housing Trust Fund that she created. And to, I guess, address Councilwoman Martinez's comment or inquiry regarding having an association of participating cities having some form of representation or input in the body, the entity that would be overlooking perhaps the navigation center or the county's new entity addressing homeless issues. Her comment reminded me of the council of governments that pay into their portion into the Housing Trust Fund for San Gabriel Valley. And I believe they have three established tiny home establishments, or at least maybe two. I know two of them are in Baldwin Park. And they specifically address some of the categories that staff just presented. One of them funds or provides housing for families with children. And the other set of tiny home projects address single individuals. I had inquired about veteran housing or veteran issues. And they said they have not done that specifically yet. They haven't designated one of those entities for housing veterans as of yet. But it is something that they would look into doing perhaps in the next rung of allocations or additions to a rider bill to that law to incorporate the housing issues. Now, it's been no secret, I've made it known that I am very much in favor of having a, some type of veterans housing in the city. Mr. Rue just explained he'd like to have something perhaps that we would control and have a little bit more say on with respect to the aspects of how things are run in our city, and I agree. But, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you just clarified in saying with respect to depending on the designation of the homeless individual. Some of those needs would be met here, perhaps in the hotel, motels that'll be converted into housing, and the others moved to the navigation center. But with respect to the navigation center, Mr. Star, you stated that it would likely be an unincorporated area. an unincorporated area of Fontana. But what would be the radius of cities to be serviced by that one center in Fontana? Is it just those west of the 15, west of the 215?
Fontana West.
Fontana West. What I wouldn't want is it to be perceived that we are, and not just us, because that would include Chino Hills, Chino, Ontario, Upland, that we're somehow pushing certain individuals away from us and passing on the burden to others. And it looked like we're not caring about certain types of individuals, but we're going to house these folks, but we don't want those. And I know that's not our intent.
Supervisor Hagman was really trying to get a site in one of the neighboring, I'm not going to mention the name of the city, one of the neighboring cities of Montclair trying to get a site. And it was not going to work well. So the site they picked, I believe the county San Bernardino already owns the site. That's part of it. But again, he did try to get something within, inside his own district as possible, but unsuccessful.
I, I will say though, despite the statistics going up and whatnot, actually, that's a comment. Let me get back to questions. I'll try to stick to your request, Mr. Mayor. Let's go to page 32, please. The listings of those agencies that we are contracted with or working with. I am curious, I didn't see House of Ruth on there and I know that they tailor to, or they provide services to women that are victims of domestic violence or battered situations. And I had thought at one time they were one of the entities that we provided some funding to. Perhaps they didn't submit a request and that could have been their choice. But are we no longer dealing with House of Ruth at all?
Well, as Mr. Fuentes pointed out, this is not a comprehensive list, but we do provide funding through the Community Activities Commission's Community Benefit Funding Allocation. I believe that they received funding this year. Typically, that funding is related to assisting individuals who were the subject of domestic violence. And while Mr. Fuentes indicated that that was a group that frequently becomes part of the homeless population, at least for us, I don't believe that that's the level of assistance that House of Ruth is providing for Montclair so much as providing temporary housing for those individuals in our community who are subjecting to domestic abuse. But certainly, we work with them and would continue to work with them. And if we need to expand that level of service, we would certainly look at that.
I, I do know that they do indeed, even if it's just for a brief period of time, they do indeed house women in their facility.
Yes, yes, they do.
So if, if we were to encounter a woman experiencing some very grave situations, life-threatening, harmful situations, I, let me back up. Did you say we are using them right now?
Well, we have a relationship where we provide them funding because we recognize that they do provide services to residents in Montclair.
Okay. I just want that option on the table and I wouldn't want to see that relationship severed in any way.
Right. Well, it's one of those, as you go to the beginning of the slide presentation, there are many different categories of definitions of homelessness and that was one of them, individuals who are subject to domestic abuse, not necessarily considered a large category and is probably not generally the focus of HUD and other programs directed at homelessness.
And page 38, please. Regarding KEL Trans, I know on this particular page, it is stated that Montclair has also implemented or is evaluating other innovative programs, including, and the first bullet point would be KEL Trans. And of course, with KEL Trans to address the issues around the Montclair Trans Center. So I wanted to inquire about what is the situation, because I know that we are, the whole Greyhound issue that was brought up in the past. And I did raise the issue of those recently released inmates that are transported to the Trans Center. Let's say those individuals, some of them, not all, some of them no longer have relatives or individuals to pick them up and thereby, in effect, they are homeless without shelter for the evening or the definition. So what are we doing with respect to recently released inmates that are released into our city at the Trans Center? How are they being accommodated or addressed?
Well, first off, we have no idea when Chino is bringing up inmates to the Trans Center. They don't advise us of that. But the few times that I have seen Chino prison up there, dropping off inmates, they generally are greeted by members of their family and are immediately taken off the location or they board buses. I don't see these individuals as loitering or staying at the Trans Center for any definite period of time. I don't think there's any bearing or relationship with Greyhound. In fact, I think that the chief of police could provide evidence that there has been no increase in crime or homelessness activity directly related to Greyhound. So any issue of homelessness up there is probably less related to the services that are operated up there or the dropping off of inmates from Chino. It's, I believe, just a migration of the population in this area that ends up at the Trans Center on occasion and then moves off.
Now, the, it was mentioned the millionaire tax and I, I had thought that that only applied to LA County, but clearly it is a state initiative.
Yes.
Was it, no?
Yeah, part of Prop 1, reallocating the millionaire tax money.
I thought it was separate from Prop 1.
Okay. The millionaire tax is, is only addressed in Proposition 1 in the effect that Proposition 1 says, counties, you have to use the millionaire tax that you've been receiving all, for these past many years for these specific purposes, primarily mental health assistance.
And I know I asked this in the past and I had, I don't have these particular notes that, when I did ask this question several months back, it's been about six months. But the two motels that we're looking into potentially buying, where are they located?
Well, let's just not, let's not disclose that. Let's keep that confidential, but if you want to ask that privately, it's fine.
Now, let me, let me ask this. There's a real life scenario going on right now as we speak concerning an individual who is homeless. And it is my understanding that the city is aware of the individual at Central at the bus stop by Benito and, Benito and Central.
Yes.
That the individual is refusing service, does not want further help, staff from the city has approached the individual, but for all intents and purposes, that individual has taken over that bus stop and kind of de facto owned it. Why can we not address removing that individual? And if they don't want services, I know we can't forcibly, and that is the debate.
Well, I think, again, I know staff is working on something. This is probably not the place to discuss it, but if you want to have that individual discussion with staff, I wouldn't recommend that.
Well, I, well, let me ask you, for a situation like that, what, what designation would that individual fall under?
You mean one of the definitions? Well, it depends on the individual's circumstances. In this particular case, I would say that that person is chronic homeless. Whether or not they have a mental health issue or a substance abuse issue, I can't address. I'm not familiar with their condition, other than the fact that they refuse to accept services from the city of Montclair, including referral for housing. So what do you do with an individual like that? Unless you enforce against them, there's very little that you can do. And as we've already discussed, we're very restricted in our enforcement capacity unless and until the Supreme Court renders a decision otherwise against Grant Pass or Boise.
Perhaps I'll bring up an inquiry regarding that issue and the old 24-hour fitness.
Well, I think what you've seen is that person moves from bus stop to bus stop. So even if we enforce, they just go to a different bus stop.
Yeah, and that person's been, provides services, that person's gone to a social service network, they have a bed. Fortunately, that person comes back and, but again, I know that staff is trying to assist her further, meeting with her. And if you have further information, I would suggest probably meeting with staff or meet with the city manager to give you better information.
Um.
Or more detailed information.
I'll, I'll address some other comments later if you'd, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, my note's 7/6/22, so, yeah. I was, I was, I have a question, a couple of questions. Ed, are we still doing the hotel vouchers? I understand perhaps that grant money may have ran out or there's been some modification. Do we have, do we have hotel vouchers, motel vouchers money right now?
The city is providing funds related to vouchers. I believe that the funds related to grants have run out though for that purpose. Is that correct, Ed?
So are we using general fund money or?
So we've, yes, we have money in the budget for.
We have money in the general, so we, because that's important, and obviously we want to use grants as much as we can, but I want to make sure that anybody in the streets that wants to get a place, that's, or somebody who just had an apartment and got evicted, they have nowhere to go, that we have some voucher money to give them, to provide.
Yes.
So that's, that's available. The other thing, I know in Santa Ana, they have a street team called the Sets, Set Team, not Set Team, Set City, I can't remember, I apologize. They work with a nonprofit organization, I think City Set, if I'm correct. And they're going out and, you know, meeting with the unhoused on the streets of Santa Ana. And I know that code enforcement right now has been overwhelmed, especially there at the San Antonio Channel. Have you thought about, staff thought about, maybe we should bring in something like what Santa Ana is doing? You know, yesterday I was in the north part of the city, there must have been at least three homeless persons in the homeless, in the Montclair East shopping center itself. I saw three others in the, just in the central Marino area. I kind of think that maybe, maybe we should reach out, you know, I don't know what the cost is, I don't know if we can afford it, I know you're working on the budget for next year. But I really think that maybe we need to bring another street outreach team. I know Chino has one, Chino Hills has one, I think Upland has one, if I'm correct, I might be wrong. But some type of street outreach team that can come in, assist code enforcement, maybe focus on a certain part of the city, the north part of the city for it perhaps, but maybe if staff can look into that. Or you have a response?
Well, we'll look into that. I'm not sure what their different teams are that they're using that are different than what the code enforcement, special enforcement team already does. Mr. Grominsky will certainly add and facilitate some transitions within the code enforcement, special enforcement team.
Right.
To make certain that they have the additional tools necessary, whether or not we need to expand that by engaging services of other entities remains to be seen. Certainly, Set Free Ministry is on the street on a regular basis with the special enforcement team. So we already have that as a adjunct service and we've even talked about expanding that service by entering into some sort of a contractual relationship with them.
Okay. Well, I just think we may need more out there. I just, I'm just concerned, like this past weekend, I see a number of individuals on the streets and I'm just kind of worried that our code enforcement staff, especially, you know, and then on top of that, we're getting calls from residents about residential issues or maintenance issues. And I kind of like to have staff take a look at it, maybe see there's, there's a greater need for us to bring in more resources for the streets.
Well, we will, but as you know, it, it takes time. For example, on the San Antonio Channel, it took us well over a couple of months to work around issues with the Army Corps of Engineers.
And they broke into the, what should we call it again? And, yeah.
Right. And I, I think unfortunately, Mr. Fondario would tell you that the, the people you're seeing, they're the ones who refuse our services. They're chronic homelessness. They suffer from chronic homelessness. They don't want our help and those people who do want help, for the most part, I would say he would tell you that he's already placed them.
Right. I, I understand that. I've been on the fields. It just, you know, this is, to me, if you ask the average Montclair resident, this is probably one, one of the biggest issues they're concerned about. And I know we have a lot of constraints on us to deal with this issue, but I think at the same time, we should do, try to maximize the efforts we can, as best we can. So again, if we can look at that, you know, maybe PD can, I know we, we BF that PD, I know Upland PD or some agencies, PD is also, may have a couple of officers deal with homeless issues as well. I just, you know, again.
Right.
I'm not asking for an answer today. I may be wrong, you may tell me I'm wrong, but I just want you to look into it.
We, we agree and we will. I just need to, but the council have a dose of realism right now on this issue and that is that the people who want help, we can help, we are helping, we're trying to expand that level of help, but the majority of the people that you see on the streets simply don't want our help. And the only relief that there is for us is that if the Supreme Court reverses the housing mandate related to Boise and Grants Pass.
Right.
The only change you're going to see is if they reverse it, is that we can simply enforce against these individuals and move them around.
Right.
But that doesn't mean they're not going to be flowing between city to city now. So whether or not you even impact the issue under release, relief related to those two cases by the Supreme Court may be negligible.
Okay. I understand. I understand that as well, but I think I've said enough. I just want to say this, it's really important for us to work together among cities. I think the plan laid out here, the navigation from the county, us trying to get our own facility here in Montclair is a good way to go. I know I mentioned it to Congressman Torres last week. She said, you really have to work, I mean, you have to collaborative among regional agencies to be more competitive for money. When I went to Sacramento two weeks ago for the California Cities, we were advocating for $3 billion for, for homelessness. And so when I met with, or someone I met Rodriguez, he said, I'd love to do that, but we're, we have a, either a $30 billion deficit or a $60 billion deficit, it depends who you talk to. So I'll stop there. I think Councilor Lopez wanted to speak and then I know, I think Councilor Rue may want to speak as well.
Just, just to follow, two, two issues. Regarding the vouchers, who on staff is making the determination that a voucher is needed for an individual or individuals?
The special code enforcement team.
Okay. And do we have any relation, working relationship? I believe this entity is called the Upland Resource Center on Euclid and A. We, we're, okay. I know they issue vouchers, but that is separate from the vouchers we are issuing.
Yes.
Okay. That's, I want a clarification on that. Because I know that there's been some individuals that we have personally referred, were given vouchers, but our folks routed them to the Upland Resource Center. So I wasn't sure if they were doling out any of our money on our behalf or not, but it, our money's in-house. Okay, just want that clarification. And then the mayor will remember this, both he and I were approached regarding, through social media, the small encampment down in the Wash on the southern end that is owned by, I believe by the Army Corps of Engineers. Was it the Army Corps?
Yeah. Army Corps or County Flood Control District.
Was that, was that issue addressed?
That's the issue I've been talking about.
Okay.
Yeah. It's been addressed, yeah. I mean, yeah, yes.
All right.
Addressed, but you have to daily monitor it because they do come back.
No, I know. It was addressed by the city's special code enforcement team. The Army Corps of Engineer was reluctant because of liability issues imposed on them and the flood control district said, we're not getting involved.
And I'll, and I'll come in, Officer Gabe Fundero and his team for taking care of that and obviously our police chiefs, police department as well, but thank you, Gabe, for taking care of that.
All right. That was it, Mr. Mayor. Oh.
Councilmember Rue, did you have anything else you'd like to say? Are you there, Bill?
Yes, now I am. I unmuted. I do appreciate what Mr. Fondario is doing. I fully believe, and this is just me, that this is a moral, ethical responsibility we in local government take on. I, you know, to think that we, you know, they're going to be pushed around from place to place, I want, I personally don't like that. I do like the model some of the other cities in LA County are doing because I've toured them, I've seen them. In fact, many areas will say the Cog facility just doesn't work, but we'll see what happens. I really truly believe we need to do something. I think we also need to talk to our school districts. To me, it is criminal that we have homeless high school students. When we talk about humanitarian efforts, that's a number one to me. How can you study when you're homeless? And in many cases, they're going door to door. They stay with, you know, their friends on this night and then, you know, tomorrow's Tuesday night, maybe they can stay there, maybe they can stay somewhere else. You know, I've talked to some of our colleges about homeless college students who are sleeping in their car or in sometimes, you know, sleeping wherever they can find something. Sometimes in dorms, they're not even supposed to be there, but they just sleep with one of the, you know, on the floor in the dorm. So, you know, we can do something about our homeless high school students, some of our homeless seniors and certainly anybody else. I'd like to see the problem where it's local and we take care of it and not push it to the county. But that's just me and this is a long discussion that will, excuse me, it's, I'm through to here. I've been up since 5:30. That we need. That we need to continue to push forward on. And I believe that if we can do what some of the other cities have done, especially those in LA County, the Regional Housing Trust they set up, we can set a model for everybody. And I'm more than happy, if anybody's interested, to work with anybody, to see some of the ones they put in, in Baldwin Park, Almani, doing something in Azusa, there's several other cities, and they've been great, they're beautiful. And, you know, I'm willing to do that, but I really want to see this solved locally. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I, I'll just, in the comments here, I know in the county here, I mean, there's two big issues that we have in the county. One, we need a lot of beds. We're missing a lot of beds. That's, that's what county's saying. That's, we had a presentation, Sandbag, RSPCTA, from the County Sheriff's Hope Team, they said, you know, that's, we're lacking beds, we need beds. Second thing, we need money. County, County Los Angeles, they have a measure that was passed by the voters, SLS Act measure that pays for homeless services. We don't have that in this county here. So, that makes it even more important for us to really work together among the cities and the counties to be competitive for both state and federal dollars if we're going to maintain, especially the operations. The capital's probably easier than that. It's the operations you've got to maintain and sustain and keep that going. So, I appreciate the discussion of homelessness. Obviously, we will put the affordable housing for a future workshop, if that's okay with the council. And I think I'm supposed to ask if any members of the public that wish to address us, this is an opportunity to address us right now, under adjourned meeting of the city council. Obviously, it'll be a city council at 7 o'clock. If not, then we adjourn this meeting, and we're done.